Next slide, please.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's candidate forum for the Santa Clara County Office of Education Board of Trustees, Area Three. There are two candidates running for one open seat, Jill Lutz and Dawn Rocha. My name is Ava Lee and I'm a high school senior in the M V L A District and an active student member and co facilitator of tonight's candidate forum hosted by the League of Women Voters of Southwest Santa Clara Valley, which covers the cities of Los Gatos, Saratoga, Monteserino, Campbell, and a segment of West San Jose. The Santa Clara County Office of Education Board of Trustees elects their members by designated districts. The two candidates for tonight's forums are vying for Area Three on the Santa Clara County Office of Education Board of Trustees, and they are again Jill Lutz and Dawn Rocha. I would like to also acknowledge our voter service team who organized tonight's forum. Sophia Cow, Tom Pickrow, Bria Shostri, Patty Tennant, Amy Vu, Eleanor Yek, and myself, Ava Lee. Next slide, please. And now little information about the League of Women Voters. The League has been empowering and defending democracy for over a hundred years. The League has two separate and distinct roles. Voter service and public education, which we are doing tonight, as well as action and advocacy on public policy issues when we have studied the area and adopted a position. Most importantly, the League is a nonpartisan political organization for women and men. The League never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. Next slide, please. Here are some more examples of the League of Women Voters Voter Service Program. We have candidate forums, pros and cons that are now posted on our website, voter registration events, and participation in Vote 411, which is your one stop information site for all things about the election. By the way, are all of our candidate forums, including this one, are recorded and will be posted in full, unedited on our local leagues' websites and YouTube channels. Next slide, please. The League of Women Voters is a national grassroots organization. There are five local leagues in Santa Clara County, and most people who join the League do so in their local geographic area, but people are free to join whichever local league they want. When you do join a local league, you automatically become a member on all levels. The Bay Area, the state, county, and national leagues. Next slide, please. This slide highlights what most Santa Clara County voters will find on their ballot. There are elections on the federal level for President and Conglucional District Sixteen, on the state level for Assembly and State and Senate seats, on the county level for the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, Santa Clara County Superior Court, and the Santa Clara County Board of Education, as well as on the local city, town, and school board levels. As long as, I mean, as well as some local measures that were put on the ballot by local cities, towns, and more. Next slide, please. This slide tells you some basic facts about voting in the upcoming election. Everyone will be receiving their ballot sometime during the week of October seventh, which is this week. Your ballot can be returned in one of three ways. Through U S mail, but make sure to sign your name exactly how you signed it in the address label, as well as you can drop it off at a secure ballot drop box, or go to a vote center where you can get a new ballot if needed, and lots of other assistance. And now I'd like to introduce Eleanor Yek, our Director of Voter Services and co facilitator of tonight's forum.
Thank you, Ava. Before we begin the forum, I would like to highlight for our audience members some information about the Santa Clara County Office of Education and the Board of Trustees. The Santa Clara County Office of Education provides, first of all, it's a regional service agency that provides instructional, business, and technological services to the thirty-one school districts in Santa Clara County. The Santa Clara County Office of Education also provides academic and fiscal oversight and monitoring to districts in addition to the twenty-one Santa Clara County Board of Education authorized charter schools. The county office of education also directly serves some students through its special education programs, alternative schools, Head Start, and the state preschool programs, migrant education, and Opportunity for Youth Academy. The Santa Clara County Office of Education elects their trustees by designated areas, which were just recently reidentified in the twenty twenty census. Trustees are elected for a four-year term. Tonight, we will be meeting and interviewing the two candidates vying for the seat in District Three. And District Three covers the following school districts. Cambrian, Campbell Union, Luther Bearbank, Moreland, Union, and Campbell Union High School districts, as well as small portions of San Jose Unified and Santa Clara Unified. Next slide. And now I would like to highlight for, again, our audience members, some ground rules that the League of Women Voters always follow in their candidate forums and which we ask our candidates to observe, and our candidates have agreed to do that. So the League supports the accepted norms of civil discourse. And in that light, the candidates have agreed to follow those norms that were outlined in a document they received. For example, the candidates have agreed to answer questions provided to them in their opening and closing statements. The candidates have agreed to follow the allotted timelines for questions, and they have agreed not to interrupt each other and to refrain from naming or making personal statements about the other candidate. If the candidate should fail to follow the League guidelines, they will first be warned. And if the behavior should continue, they might be asked to leave the forum. And now I would like to introduce Julie Reynolds Grabby, a longtime League member and moderator of tonight's forum. Julie?
Hi there. Okay, now on to our forum. I'm pleased to officially welcome and introduce the two candidates who are running for District Three on the Santa Clara County Office of Education Board of Trustees. Candidates, please put your video on when I call your name. First of all, we have Jill Lutz. Okay, there you are. All right, there's Jill, and we also have Dawn Rocha.
Hello.
Okay, wonderful. Candidates, we so appreciate your willingness to participate in this virtual forum tonight. During tonight's forum, when the candidates are answering questions, a timer will appear on a separate screen. Sophia Cow, our I T Chair, will now show the audience and the candidates that timer. Please note how the color around the timer changes as it nears the allotted time for that question. Candidates are requested to end their sentence once the stop sign is shown. This forum is scheduled to last approximately one hour. Each candidate will have ninety seconds to introduce her or himself by answering this question as their opening statement. What specifically qualifies you to serve on the Santa Clara County Office of Education Board of Trustees, District Three? Number one, the candidates will make their opening statements in alphabetical order. After their opening statements, candidates will have sixty seconds to answer subsequent questions which have been submitted through the registration process, obtained from social media sites, and/or developed by League members. And lastly, the forum will close with the candidates speaking in a reverse order from the opening statement and answering the question. What question do you wish you had been asked tonight, why, and how would you have responded? And for that question, they will have ninety seconds to respond. Okay, and now let's begin. Candidates, please answer this question as your opening statement. What specifically qualifies you to serve on the Santa Clara County Office of Education Board of Trustees, District Three? You'll have ninety seconds, and because we're doing this alphabetically, we're gonna start with Ms. Lutz. We'll go first.
Thank you, Julie, and I really appreciate your being here tonight at the League of Women Voters. I thank you very much for inviting Dawn and myself. I was born and raised in San Jose. I taught for thirty years. I know the importance of academic achievement, and I certainly know how to create a lifelong love of learning. I have also been a policymaker for twenty-two years as a city council member and a school board trustee in Salinas and Monterey County. Just a little bit of interesting history. In eighteen eighty-one, the state legislature required that at least two teachers sit on the county board of education. And I believe that even today, a hundred and fifty years later, it's really critical to have a teacher on the board. County school boards are critical for student success and responsible for the most vulnerable of our students. The relationship between our county board and our superintendent should be a shared collaborative governance so both can govern effectively for the benefit of students and families. I am running for this position because I am a passionate advocate for education. I want to be the county board advocate between the state policies and local districts and to ensure that our county-based services and programs support all of our students and provide the highest quality educational opportunities.
Thank you so much. And now Dawn Rocha will have the same question in ninety seconds. What specifically qualifies you to serve on the Santa Clara County Office of Education Board of Trustees for District Three?
Thank you for the, for the opportunity, and I too want to share all the League of Women Voters folks who put this together and for all the work that you do year round, not just around election time. So thank you for that, and thank you for including me. I know you mentioned in the beginning, this is an open seat. I'm actually serving in this trustee area already. I was appointed about a year and a half ago, so spent two years on this board. But as to what qualifies me for, I think the beauty of the democratic process is that anybody can run for any particular office they so choose. How my public service started was about thirty years ago, and I studied political science with a minor in philosophy. I had my first job working as the council assistant. From there, it's been about thirty years and numerous different roles, serving whether it's the city, the county, the state, and now an elected role. I was elected to the Cambrian School Board, two thousand and eight. Served on the city council for two, two terms, and then elected again to the Cambrian School Board. And then this seat opened up, and I was encouraged to apply for its appointment, and I received a majority of votes to serve in this role, and I'm very honored for that. As far as a little bit about me, I've lived my entire life in Santa Clara County. I attended pretty much the schools that all exist in this district, from Campbell to Campbell Union High School District. But I did go off to Santa U State for college and then returned immediately. This is my home. I plan to live here the rest of my life, and I very much enjoy my work in public service. So thank you for having me.
Wonderful. Okay, so now we're gonna, we're gonna switch it every time we're gonna switch it. So Dawn, you're gonna answer this next question first. And the question is, what are the primary roles and responsibilities of the Santa Clara County Board of Education today? And you'll have sixty seconds.
Today? Well, I think from your list, I think you had special education programs, alternative schools, Head Start, preschool programs, migrant education, opportunity, youth academy, and the one I didn't see there was charter schools.
Yes.
I think that's, and it might have been there, and I just missed it. So I think that about covers it.
All right.
It'll save us all some time tonight. Stop there.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Jill Lutz, you're gonna have the same question. You're gonna have sixty seconds. And what are the primary roles and responsibilities of the Santa Clara County Board of Education today?
It's kind of interesting. There are fifty-eight county boards and almost a thousand school districts in California. Basically, what the role of the county board is to do is to meet the student needs, the unmet student needs that are not provided through the district. So the county board needs to link those program services with the local districts. It needs to link those program services with the state, what's going on with the state. They need to provide oversight of all the districts. You know, the role of the county is interesting because it's essential and it's critical, but it's kind of undefined through the state legislature. So it's an appellate body of charter schools. It's the governing body related to expulsion and intra-district appeals. It's the body that's responsible for foster youth. I think pretty much that covers a lot of what the county does.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, and now Dawn, you're gonna get to answer that question. Oh, no, sorry. Give me a second. Actually, yes, we're gonna do, I'm getting confused on what to order it.
I went first, this last one is Jill's turn.
Okay, it's Jill's turn. Yay, thank you. Takes the village. Okay. Jill, what do you see as the number one educational issue currently facing Santa Clara County that the board needs to solve?
Probably the mental health crisis that kids are facing today. It's staggering. One out of something like twenty percent, one out of six children are dealing with some sort of mental health crisis or behavioral crisis. I certainly saw it in the classroom. We need to really encourage and work for more funding for services, for mental health and wellness centers. We need to get better staffing for mental health for, for our students. You know, one thing that's really important to remember is that any type of wellness center, behavioral resources, trained psychologists and therapists on the school sites, that can really reduce the stigma of getting help that kids need and that's associated with, with mental health. It also increases intent, excuse me, increases attendance in the schools and the likelihood of graduation. But it is a critical crisis in our schools today. And, and, sorry, I see my time's up. I just was, to finish my sentence, it's something that schools across America are facing.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, Dawn, same question. What do you see as the number one educational issue currently facing Santa Clara County that the board needs to solve?
Well, I think that the question is a bit interesting. I'm gonna approach it a little differently. Is I think what the county board of education, the county office of education needs to do is to do a better job of engaging the community that we serve as to what those needs are. I know we established those, the seven board members along with our superintendent and this governance team. But I don't think that since the pandemic, that we have been out in the community asking the questions from the school districts, the students, the teachers, and our employees as to what we should be doing and what should we be doing differently? Are we really hitting the mark? I don't know enough of that because I don't think that we are out there in the community engaging them. I know you could suggest that it's incumbent upon me to make the rounds and visit every school site, every school district. But there was a time when there used to do town halls, we used to do summits, and we used to actively engage the whole community as to what our priorities should be. And I think that's missing. And again, I think the pandemic had a lot to do with it. So I think that's our first focus. Thank you.
All right. Okay, Dawn, you get to go next. A question for what kind of hiring process would you propose for the board as they search for a new county superintendent?
I just answered it with the previous question. I would like to see us engage the public. I'm most interested in, and it's not to suggest that the public at large is important in this, but I'm most interested in in terms of the school sites, the school districts, and the students that we serve. I'd like to know where the gaps are. I think Jill did a great job of talking about the mental health issue and the opportunity there. And that just may be the most important issue that we should be touching on. But again, without hearing from the community in a, in a more engaged way, I think that's probably the best approach. Thank you for the question.
You're welcome. Okay. Same question to you, Jill. What kind of hiring process would you propose for the board as they search for a new county superintendent?
Well, I have been on a school board when we certainly have done a superintendent search. I guess my, my real question, and I think a lot of people's real question is that the firing of the superintendent certainly happened without any public discourse or dialogue. And so I, I certainly would hope that the board would, would include the, the public if indeed they do do a superintendent search, which by the way, is very expensive, but it needs to go through the process. Maybe there'll be a reinstatement. I don't know. But I think right now, I'm looking at the community, the people that I've talked to, state senators, assembly members, school board members throughout the community are all very surprised at what happened with the superintendent. And so I think there's just gonna be a lot of questions that have to be answered, a lot of transparency, and a lot of public involvement.
Thank you so much. Okay, Jill, it's yours again. Here goes question five. How do you stay current on changes in curriculum and assessment as mandated by the state or other governing boards?
Well, curriculum, obviously, any curriculum that's adopted needs to involve teachers, needs to involve everybody, all the stakeholders that are involved. I mean, and to keep up with it, it's, it's tough, but there's some great, great new curriculum programs that are coming down from the state that we're looking at whole new ideas and ways of teaching. What I love is, you know, as we're looking at like brain compatible education, we're looking at all kinds of project-based learning, which is so exciting. So it's, it's, we're actually pretty easy to keep up with all the new trends that are going on because there's a lot of exciting stuff that's happening in education today. And having been on the curriculum committee many times with my own district, we, what, what the board needs to do is keep up with the teachers, keep up with the people who boots on the ground that are in the classroom, and find out what's working, what's getting the kids to learn, what's getting them excited about education.
Thank you. Okay, Dawn, this same question is for you. How do you stay current on changes in curriculum and assessment as mandated by the state or other governing boards?
So, I read, read, read. I depend a lot on the C S B A updates and notices around changes and whether it's curriculum or other issues related to school boards or school districts. Depend a lot on the county office of education as well in terms of them providing us updates and guidance and items on our board that provide those updates. Also, I'd like to see, you know, I think the great point that Jill made again is around the teachers. And that goes back to my original point is that I think that we need to be, do better job as a county office of education and a board of engaging those that we serve and the teachers in the classroom as to what their needs might be. There's also another one that's legislative trips and visiting Sacramento and speaking to our legislators, but not just the legislators, but also the staff in Sacramento as to what's going on, at least local here. It's kind of a two-way conversation. What they're experiencing there and what we're experiencing here, and that's how good dialogue happens. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, back to you, Dawn. Number six. The Board of Education hires the superintendent and fires when necessary. What qualifications would you look for when hiring a superintendent?
Well, I'm a broken record at this point, and it goes back to kind of the engagement with the public. I also have a strong interest in, and this is, you know, I talked about, I haven't talked about it yet, but in terms of my campaign, which is kind of three pillars that I'm looking at, which is accountability, transparency, and then equity in education. And that last one, equity in education, is to me, ensuring that we're investing where it's needed. And that goes back to my opening statement around engaging the community more, asking them what their needs are, asking the student what their needs are, asking the parents of those students what their needs are. I think that's a big opportunity for us that we really have to step into.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, Jill, same question for you. The Board of Education hires the superintendent and fires when necessary. What qualifications would you look for when hiring a superintendent?
Well, the bottom line is, we just need an exceptional educational leader who has consistently demonstrated their commitment to improving the lives of students in the community. I, again, while I'm, I think a lot of people are concerned that the current superintendent who was fired won the Educational Service Agency's Women of Inspiration in Educational Leadership. They won, she won the Large Accounting Office of the Year in Recognition of Extraordinary Work so this year. So I'm, I'm kind of confused as to why this superintendent was fired. And I think that there needs to be a public explanation and accounting. But, but bottom line, we need somebody who's transparent. We need to have a process that's transparent, and we need a dedicated educational leader, and that's the bottom line.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Jill, this one's coming back at you. We're at, question seven. What policies would you put in place to ensure that controversial polarizing issues are handled in a civil, balanced way on campuses?
Um, I think there has to be one hundred percent focus on academic excellence and student success. And so if the polarizing issues are not addressing that, then it should not be addressed by the board. The board has to absolutely have one hundred percent laser focus on our students and on their success. So, you know, we have to, obviously, we have to have civil discourse. We cannot allow, you know, public, I don't want to say brawls, because nothing ever gets quite that far, but that kind of angry rhetoric does not belong in the, on the school board, in the school board chambers. It doesn't belong at the district office, at the county office. We just have to make sure that people are civil, and we have to remember the issues that come to the board should be all about academics.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're gonna have the same question for Mr. Rocha. What policies would you put in place to ensure that controversial polarizing issues are handled in a civil, balanced way on campuses?
Policies. So, you know, I'm a, again, a broken record is I'd like to hear from the folks who are actually doing the work in the classrooms, the school sites, the superintendents that fall within the county office of education's scope of work. You know, if they're lacking resources, if they're lacking support in some form or another, that's what the county office of education is there for, and we need to know that. So without knowing that, then I would just be, you know, Dawn suggesting what we should do without really engaging those that are, I guess, the experts, as you could suggest, that know what their needs are. I can't say that I know exactly offhand, whether it's dispute resolution or a greater investment in counselors on site. So for me, it's about listening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And Dawn, you get the, you get the first crack at this next question. The current state funding formula provides additional funding for schools who serve high percentages of low-income and/or second-language learners. Do you feel it is fair? Why or why not?
That's a good question. I do think it's fair because we've been talking a lot about trying to narrow the achievement gap for years and years and decades and decades. And from the numbers that I've seen so far in the last year and a half, been on the board is we're not there. So until we get there, I completely agree with that investment. I also think that in general, I'll call out the state legislators and governor. We need to fully invest and fully fund public education because we have locally school districts that have to pass parcel taxes, school districts that have to pass bond measures to cover the cost of basic education funding. And until that stops, you're gonna have arguments here at the local level, whether it's between the school board and the teachers asking for more money, whether it's because the parents are talking about the lack in facilities, or the teacher shortage, or whatever it may be. So we continuously underfund public education, and for me, that would be a top priority for the state of California.
Righty. Thank you so much. And now that same question to you, Jill. Question eight. The current state funding formula provides additional funding for schools who serve high percentages of low-income and/or second-language learners. Do you feel it is fair? Why or why not?
Absolutely, it's fair. The county has to help students who are bilingual learners. We have to help kids that, that are from disadvantaged backgrounds. We need to get those underrepresented kids into A P classes. We need to get the, create programs that work, you know, really closely with, with schools to provide biliteracy programs and strengthen native languages. The, the other thing, though, that has to happen, I mean, that's just one way of, of looking at the budget. But, you know, we also need to be advocates. We need to work with the state legislature to say, we need to change our funding formulas. We need to have funding formulas based on enrollment, not on average daily attendance. We need to get rid of the trial court offset, which takes away millions of dollars from this school, county school board. So there's other, there's other ways that we need to try to increase the budget, but absolutely, this is a fair way to start.
Sorry about that. Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. And Jill, this question's gonna come to you first. Question nine. What are your ideas on addressing the mental health of students?
Well, that's a, kind of addressed that earlier, but we need more mental wellness centers on every single campus, in every district, in the county schools, in this, in the local school district. We've got to encourage our school districts to increase funding and staffing for mental health programs. You know, wellness centers, and that's just one of, you know, a variety of ways to address it. But wellness centers right now are commonly accepted as the best practice for integrating school-based mental health services. And I've already talked about how they can significantly reduce the Um and I've already talked about how they can significantly reduce the stigma. Associated with seeking mental health services as well as increased attendance and increased graduation rates. But um we can see that mental illness and the increasing amount of mental illness and suicide ideation among kids. Is really a disturbing and growing concern in in America. And as a country, we need to address the problem.
Thank you so much, Jill. Okay, same question to you, Dawn. What are your ideas on addressing the mental health of students?
I'm almost tempted to say what Jill said, uh but as as I was sitting here thinking and looking at notes, that's generally, I I I mean. The way that we should be approaching it, we it's our wellness centers, she called it out perfectly, uh the mental health programs. Um I would talk about counselors as well onsite, a greater investment in that. But again, our schools are already. Then in terms of their budget. So the expectation that we're gonna ask our school school districts to step up. And provide these additional programs or staffing is, I believe, un- unrealistic. And I hate to say that out loud, but it not, I'm not putting that onus on them. I'm not putting the onus on the county office of education. I'm putting the onus on the state of California for not providing enough funding for this particular issue that we just brought up. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, Dawn, uh question ten to you. How will you work to ensure schools cultivate engaged and informed citizens? Ready to work together across differences and actively participate in our democracy?
Oh, boy. And attain world peace after. That's, how will I do that? Huh? Um, well, I I guess it goes back to uh. The curriculums that are in the classroom and what we're asking of the students. But to be fair, we've got teachers in the classroom that, in my opinion, are already doing as much as they can. Without additional staff support, without additional uh funding support, without additional time in the classroom. Uh the expectation that they would be able to pull it off because I'm not gonna do it sitting on the dice. That's really, at the end of the day, gonna be the school sites and the teachers themselves. So with all due respect, I think that's an unrealistic expectation to ask of our teachers, given the current funding and staff support that we're providing them. Um so for me, it goes back to providing additional staff support to our s- our pair, I'm sorry, our teachers and our school sites. Thank you.
You. Okay, Jill, same question for you. How will you work to ensure schools cultivate engaged and informed citizens? Ready to work together across differences and actively participate in our democracy?
Well, I think that's what education is all about. Um our our public school system is the foundation of our democracy. And that's what teachers are trained to do. Um you know, we're trained to create lifelong learners. And lifelong readers and people who are excited, children who are excited about learning and education. And so we bring in all these different learning strategies into the classroom. And we get kids connected to the classroom and to learning and to the curriculum. And they become the citizens that we really have trained them to be. Um we need an open liberal education for our kids. And we will absolutely pro- um protect democracy. And when we create kids that are get a well-balanced educational program. To in which they feel like they belong, that they're welcomed into the classroom. We will create those citizens that we really need, that we need to see in the future.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. Um okay, Jill, this question is to you, question eleven. What's an interesting fact about you that someone probably does not know?
Well, let's see. I know. Um I I I I worked at San Quentin, um volunteered. I uh was in a situation when I was on the Salinas um city council and we had to cut funding because. Money was being the the E R A F money was being transferred to schools and cities had to cut funding. And so um in Salinas, we almost had to close our libraries. And that became, actually, it ended up becoming a. Um glow uh nan international issue, and the prisoners in San Quentin. Actually raised money fifteen hundred dollars for the city of Salinas to hold open its libraries. So I went over to San Quentin, met with the people that are incarcerated there. We talked about the fact that seventy percent of all people in prisons are illiterate to some degree or another. And I got involved in their, what was called Project Reach, which was a literacy program that the people themselves that were there began. And it was wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Okay, Dawn, same question to you. Uh what's an interesting fact about you that someone probably does not know?
Like pickles. No, I'm kidding. Um. A fun fact, let's see here. I was thinking about the fact that Santana Row, which is um a shopping center and a development here here in West San Jose. It's actually in the district. Um is named after a park very close by. Uh it's pretty adjacent, Frank M. Santana Park. And that park was named after my great-grandfather. So you, I my claim to fame is that Santana Rose named after my. It's a little fun fact. And a little bit of exaggeration in that that is named after my family, but uh it's it's an accurate story that I just described.
All right. Thank you so much. And Dawn, you're gonna get this question, question twelve. Do you think the current state mandated assessments of student achievement provide the best indicators of student success?
I'll just give an answer that's just a e- easy short one is yes. Uh unless I'm shown otherwise, and I can't say that I've seen any other um any other opinion that it doesn't, so.
All right. Thank you. And Jill, same question to you. Do you think the current state mandated? Assessments of student achievement provide the best indicators of student success?
Absolutely not. Nope. Um my students, all students, we have, they have different learning styles, different learning modalities. Uh different strengths. Some kids are stronger in um it performing arts as opposed to say math. Other students are better readers. There's all different ways that students can show, can become successful. But uh the the edu- the academic testing does not cover all the ways that students are talented and successful. And we we really need to figure out a better testing system. The other thing is, a lot of students have a fear of testing, and they just don't do well. So again, there's got to be a better way of testing our students. Because we do have students that don't do well on mandated testing, and yet they're great successes in certain areas. Which they have just excelled and will be great successes.
Thank you so much for that. And same question to you, Dawn. No.
Jill, first.
You go first. Thank you. Thank you for being on the ball, Dawn.
Sure.
Okay. What will you do to ensure education is more tailored to students' individual needs? And empowers active learners that feel ownership of their academic journey?
Well, I think that we need to really focus on a couple of things. We need to focus on project-based learning. We know that works. We know kids buy into that. We also need to look at brain compatible education, which again, really reaches students. We need to find ways that students can connect into the classroom. Um and that, you know, uh di- diverse libraries. Diverse curriculum, curriculum that stresses um equity and inclusion. Um we need to get kids into early childhood education. So that they learn early and young and get a real head start on their literacy um goals and achievements. Um there's, there's lots of ways that we can get kids that we can be more effective in teaching. But it it takes training and it takes, you know, a lot, it's it's a lot of work. But I can tell you one thing, that um it doesn't, it doesn't mean we we put kids in front of a computer all day long. That doesn't work.
All right. Thank you for that. And Dawn, same question to you. What will you do to ensure? Education is more tailored to students' individual needs and empowers active learners that feel ownership of their academic journey?
Well, I'll say that is, that is a very good question, but I'm gonna go back to, and it's it's not to evade the the question. It's that, what am I gonna do? Well, I alone can't do what you're asking this question to do. It it goes back to fully funding and investing in public education where we provide the support to the school sites. The school districts, the teachers in the classroom. There's a lot of different ways to approach this. But until we provide the support, what I, you know, thirty years, as I mentioned, in public service, and I've listened to either a number of candidates. I've been asked a number of questions, candidate forum. I've watched and listened o- other elected officials. I've listened to parents. I've listened to stakeholders. And the constant criticism and critique is just generally this, how are you gonna accomplish that? And we continue to ask that question over and over again, and we're still in the same place. So we can all sit here and suggest uh we should be doing this, we should be doing that, but without the resources. Very little has changed. I I've watched this happen years and years and years, and my my emotion is that I'm frustrated by that.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh Dawn, this question's gonna go to you first. If elected, how do you plan to communicate with and keep your constituents in District Three informed and engaged?
Well, there's the broken record again, is I have every intention of. With the hiring of a new superintendent, a shift and a focus on engaging the community in terms of what their needs are. So I'd like to see us host town halls or summits throughout the county and different districts. Um with either the schools, school districts in in partnership. Um with the teachers in partnerships or with stakeholder and nonprofit groups that we work with to provide the services we do.
All right. Thank you. And on to you, Jill. Same question. If elected. How do you plan to communicate with and keep your constituents in District Three informed and engaged?
The one really nice thing about the election process is that. Candidates go out and meet the people in their district. They meet the people who are leaders in the district, who are parents, who are stakeholders, um community leaders. It's been a real pleasure for me to go out and meet so many people in this district. And they share with me their concerns and their worries about the school district. And so I think what I would do, I wouldn't depend on a superintendent. I would depend on myself. To continue that dialogue that I have with people who have reached out to me or people I've reached out to with their concerns. And I think that what that's incumbent upon every single board member, whether it be at the district level, the county level. All the people that we work with. And then, of course, since I was president of my CTA district. Um we meet with the teachers and we meet with the staff. We meet with those people who are boots on the ground. And make sure that we're hearing what their concerns are also.
Thank you, Jill. Um this next question is gonna go to you first. All California high school students must take ethnic studies class to graduate. Do you support this new graduation requirement?
Gosh, yes, absolutely. We need to have any, I you know, inclusionary um ethnic studies programs in our schools. It gets kids connected to their to their own backgrounds. It helps other people share stories about their cultures and their. Their families, their histories. Um I think that um ethnic studies is an excellent program for our students. To to engage in and be a part of, and it's really fortunate. That we actually are in a place where there's some great programs out there. And how wonderful to expand and enrich the curriculum. Ethnic studies really enriches a curriculum, inclusionary of ethnic studies, truly enriches um a child's education.
Thank you for that, Jill. Okay, same question to you, Mr. Rocha. All California high school students must take ethnic studies class to graduate. Do you support this new graduation requirement?
Yes.
That's it? Okay.
Yes, uh, yes.
Feel free to.
No, I'm all right.
You're good. Okay, that's fine. Okay, the next question goes to Dawn first. What's your opinion on recent advancement in AI and its potential impact to the future of learning and education?
Another really good question. And so. Actually, my new role at work is leading the innovation unit, which is looking at implementing AI, BI, ML, or predictive analytics. So I've had four months now to do a little bit of work in this realm. And what I've learned, the first thing I've learned is that it's very new. And it's the new shiny object. It's the new buzzword, and many different companies are marketing themselves as AI um leaders. So we are just on the beginning cusp of that. So the other thing that I've learned is that you don't go seeking a. Solution to find a problem. So until we know what this type of technology can do. Going and buying it and then putting it in the classroom or suggesting the teachers need to incorporate that into the curriculum is the wrong approach. One, it's too early, and two, we don't know enough about the benefits yet. So for me, it's about being patient with this and making sure we do it homeable. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And same question to you, Jill. What's your opinion on recent advancement? In AI and its potential impact to the future of learning and education?
Well, I think it's fascinating to watch what's going on with AI in terms of what's happening in Congress. What's happening at at state legislature, um watching Governor Newsom signing bills, watching Silicon Valley. Either getting really upset or saying, yeah, good, this is great. Um it's all new. It's all new. But here's the problem, when you're in the classroom and all the new stuff comes along. It's like hanging on to a pendulum, and you're swinging back and forth with all the new things that are coming through. It will be interesting to see what goes on with AI. But I can tell you what AI can't do. It cannot replace a teacher. And we need those teachers in the classroom because if education's gonna work and if children are gonna reach academic success. Nothing replaces the teacher.
Thank you so much for that. Okay, candidates, this next question will will be your last question and your closing statement. The question is, what question do you wish you had been asked tonight and why? How would you have responded? You will have ninety seconds to respond. We're gonna go in the reverse order from the opening statement. So that means we'll go with Mr. Rocha first. You have ninety seconds. Thank you.
All right. I'll make it a fun one. Um I wish you'd asked me about my family. So then I get a, do I get a chance to answer my question?
Yes.
All right. Good. So my uh my mom and dad um are both former high school teachers, uh public high school teachers. My brother uh high school teacher, so education runs deep in my family. I was kind of the. The the lone wolf that didn't pursue that um vocation for most of my career. Uh so probably didn't value education as a youngster, and I finally kind of pulled my head out. And realized that without education, it's a very difficult hill to climb in terms of being a productive citizen. So for me, that's how I got to where I'm at in terms of public service. As far as the rest of my family, my um. I have an older son who is twenty-five years old now. And he um is married, graduated from uh Zizou Pacific, and they are pregnant, expecting a little girl in February. So I'm very excited there. My daughter, uh she is at University of Arizona. And my youngest son is in high school, a sophomore at Brandon. So my children all went to the public schools here, which is why I'm so invested in this particular community. They went through the Cambrian School District, on through the Campbell Union High School District, right within my district. So for me, I've got a lot of payback to do because those those schools provided um us a great experience, and my children are better for it. So there you have it.
Thank you for all that information. It's wonderful. Congratulations on the.
Thank you. Yeah, grandpa.
Very exciting. Okay.
Didn't see that.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Uh Jill, I'm gonna ask you the same question. You're gonna have ninety seconds. And what question do you wish you'd been asked tonight and why? How would you have responded? So take it away.
Well, first of all, um I I I think the question it that I would have liked to have seen. Asked was, what do I want to accomplish? Should I win um the seat? Um one thing that's kind of fun about both Dawn and I running is we, our roots are very similar. My my dad taught at Delmar High School. My mom was at Lee High School. Um my brother is at Westmont High School. Um and my granddaughter attends school um in the Cambrian School District. Um so we both have long roots in this community. Um for me, though, the the bottom bottom line, the question is, what do I want to accomplish? Well, I want to champion policies and investments and initiatives that really address. The mental health of our students and strengthen um support for our foster youth. Um I'm running because I think that we have, we need a school board that has better community relations. Um I want to have a school board that has more open and transparent decision-making. And I feel the bottom line is, is that we also need transparency with our budget. And decisions that have been recently made by the school board could potentially cost the district. And decisions that have been recently made by the school board could potentially cost the district hundreds of thousands of dollars with, for example, the firing of the superintendent. And I just think that we need real accountability and real reaching out to the community and engaging the public. So that's what I hope to accomplish. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you so much. Thank you to both of you. We so appreciate your participation. And we wish you well in your campaign and greatly respect your candidacy for this very critical office. Audience members, I want to thank you for your attendance. We hope you have learned a lot tonight. And that will help you make your decision when voting. And now our student co-facilitator, Ava, will remind you of some important election facts.
So again, the general election is on November 5th of 2024, so make sure to vote on or before November 5th. Next slide, please. Remember to use vote411.org for all your election questions. This is the main information site recommended by the League. Here are some more nonpartisan election resources to consult, such as the Official Voter Information Guide and California Secretary of State. Also, note the Easy Voter Guide produced by the League of Women Voters of California, and it's down, available for download in five different languages. And now our voter services director, Eleanor Yick, will close the meeting.
Thank you, Ava. Thank you for co-facilitating again tonight, this forum, and for being an active and involved member of our league. Ava has been working on the layout and design of our monthly league newsletter called The Voter for the past two years. I also want to take this opportunity to remind all who are listening that students can pre-register to vote at age 16 and will receive notification from the registrar of voters when they turn 18 and are eligible to cast their vote. Students can also join the League of Women Voters, too. Lastly, candidates and audience members, this forum was recorded and will be posted in full, unedited on our league's website and YouTube channel. In closing, the league wishes to remind all voters that democracy is not a spectator sport. Everyone who can vote should vote. And we hope that our forum tonight has helped you to be an informed voter when it comes to casting your ballot. Thank you very much for your attendance and good night.